Good morning and welcome to this formal meeting of the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Rob Kendrick and I'm chairman of the committee. Welcome to all members and officers present today. The video feed of this meeting has been broadcast live via the county council website. And I'd also like to welcome members of the present public who are watching our meeting online today. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I'd like to remind you all that your comments will remain accessible online and can be reported by the media. I'd like to welcome also the following senior officers from Children's Services. Heather Sandy, Executive Director, Children's Services. Linda Dennett, Assistant Director, Children's Health and Commissioning. Tara Jones, Assistant Director, Children's Safeguarding. And Martin Smith, Assistant Director, Children's Education. Welcome also to councillor Mrs Patricia Bradwell, OBE, Executive Councillor for Children's Services, Community Safety, Procurement and Migration. And her Executive Support Councillor, councillor Stephen Rowe, who are also attending today's meeting. As usual, I'd like to begin with the health and safety announcement. There's no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through reception into the front car park and await further instructions. And can I also remind you to ensure your mobiles and other devices are on silent mode? And when invited to speak, can you please ensure you switch your microphone on? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening online won't be able to hear you. And please be aware, you need to speak directly into the microphones to be heard. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please raise your hand and I'll make a note. So without further delay, let's move on to the business on today's agenda. Item one is apologies for absent and replacement members. Jess, do we have any apologies?
Thank you, chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Robert Reed, councillor William Gray, councillor Mrs Susan Nutman, and also we have councillor Alex Hall to replace councillor Mark Whittington. We've also received apologies from Joe Cavanagh, Assistant Director of Early Help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item two on the agenda is declarations of members' interests. Members of the committee are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their declaration of pecuniary interest form. Do any members wish to declare an interest? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item three. Minutes of the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee meeting held on the 6th of December 2024. And this is to approve and sign the minutes from the meeting of the committee held in December as set out on pages five to 10 of the Agenda Pack as a correct record. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Matthews and the seconder councillor Smith. We'll now vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those against? Any abstentions, councillor Hall? Thank you very much. That's the minutes agreed. Thank you. We now move on to item four, which is announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and chief officers. Firstly, my announcements. I attended the meeting of the executive on the 7th of January to present the committee's comments in relation to the young carers' final report, which we considered at our last meeting. I'm pleased to report that the executive agreed to accept all the recommendations in the final report. And I look forward to the committee receiving the executive's response and action plan at our next meeting on the 7th of March, which will set out what actions will be undertaken to implement the 12 recommendations. And also just to make the committee aware, I'm planning to hold our usual 10-minute comfort break after item seven. So it's after item seven today. Executive councillor announcements. Are there any executive councillor announcements, councillor Mrs Bradwell? Thank you. Are there any chief officer announcements, Heather Sandy?
No, mister chairman.
Thank you. We now move on to item five on your agenda, which is council budget 2025-26. This item, which can be found on pages 11 to 26 of the Agenda Pack, sets out the council's budget proposals for 2025-26 with a specific focus on budget implications for children's services activities. And just to recap on the actions required of us as a committee, we're required to consider this report and provide comments on the children's services budget proposals for consideration by the executive at its meeting on the 4th of February. The report will be presented by Heather Sandy, Executive Director, Children's Services. But we also have Mark Popperwell, Strategic Finance Lead, Children's Services, in attendance for this item. So it's over to you, Heather.
Thank you, mister chairman. As I say every year, this is a really detailed budget paper. And as this committee knows, I normally come with a lovely set of notes so I can take you through it. Unfortunately, my computer has crashed, so I am going to take you through it. But just bear with me if I have to go into some of the detail. I apologise. So the paper contains the council's budget proposals for the next financial year 25-26. We've had a detailed review of the cost base and a combination of the demand pressures we're facing, the unit price increases and the burdens arising from new legislation has meant that actually we've got significant costs to consider within the budget this year. On the 18th of December, the department published the provisional local government finance settlement. And this report, as you've said, specifically looks at the implications for children's services activities. So the provisional settlement confirmed specific funding allocations for local authorities. And some of the funding allocations will be provided at the final settlement a little bit later on. At the end of January 2025, the council will receive confirmation of the council tax base and the business rate income. The council's financial planning framework seeks to forecast the cost base and the funding base over the medium-term period covering four years. It's important to emphasise to the committee that there is significant funding uncertainty beyond 25-26. And that is definitely posing a challenge to long-term financial planning, both for revenue and for capital investment. The government has set out an intention to reform funding as part of the autumn budget. And that should see multi-year settlements, which would be preferable and allow us to plan in the longer term. The new government has already signaled direction changes across a range of areas. And we have seen significant funding shifts announced. And we've also seen new burdens, which are the result of national policy that has not been funded. Lincolnshire's share of national core spending, which is 736 million in 25-26, is lower than its share in 24-25. And of the 33.6 increase we've seen to our core spending, 24.3 million of that relates to an assumption of council tax increases. So we'll get into a little bit of that as we move through the paper. The settlement has provided a lower increase for funding than the council has received in recent years. And that is due to funding being directed to other areas. We've also seen an increase in employer national insurance expectations and demand pressures across social care and different services. Therefore, the council is worse off in 25-26. And the increased costs cannot be fully met by funding in a way that has recently been the case in Lincolnshire. The current position reflects a deficit position in all years. The deficit in 25-26 is estimated to be around 2.9 million. And that is based on an assumed local taxation position of 2.99% increase. The budget shortfall will need to be met from reserves to achieve a budget balance. And the committee should know that these are one-off monies. Moving on to section 1.19. The national insurance change that I've mentioned has been calculated as costing Lincolnshire around 5.5 million. And the government has confirmed that we will not be compensated where those national increases fall on our external providers, even though we will have to pay that to our external providers. Given all of that, I think it is important to recognise that we do have a strong foundation at the council. And that means we are better placed than most to navigate the financial challenges that lie ahead. So at the bottom of page 13, we're moving into the children's education section. Remember, we split the children's budgets into social care and into education. You'll see within this section, we are proposing cost pressures of 1.1 million. And there are no savings proposed from this budget at this time. The majority of that cost pressure relates to the statutory need to carry out assessments as part of the EHCP process, the SEND process. And as this committee well knows, we've seen a significant rise in the number of requests in that areas. And that looks set to be the case without national change. I won't go into a lot of depth on that because this committee receives separate reports on that SEND system and will continue to do so as we know national reform is being discussed. The other rise relates to national living wage and a rise for our direct payments. And that is in support of children with disabilities. So moving into children's social care, you'll see that we are proposing to make savings of around a million in this area. And we have a cost pressure of 10.6 million. Again, this cost pressure is well rehearsed within this committee with regard to our placements for children in care, the increasing costs that we're seeing in those areas. The report outlines the work that I think this committee knows really well that we do to ensure that children get the right help at the right time to support families to come to their own solutions. Meaning that we drive down the number of children in care that we have. We know we benchmark well for that. But these budgets are demand-led and they are volatile. So the children's services system is working well. We know that we're inspected. We know through the reports that we've had. We know through the young carers' report that we've just seen. We are a high performer in children's services. And we will continue to have that emphasis on prevention for children coming into care and exit planning from the care system where this can be achieved safely. And that is why we continue to benchmark low for our children in care. But it doesn't leave us immune to the cost rises that have been seen nationally for the per placement. There has been an announcement of a new children's social care prevention grant, which is worth 250 million nationally. And that is to support with the social care reforms to enable investment in preventative services. For Lincolnshire, that will equate to 2.966 million for 25-26. This committee knows we are a pathfinder for that programme. We've already begun to implement it and we're well placed to continue to do that. The Family Hubs programme has been confirmed for a further year, which brings an additional allocation of 2.1 million. However, there still remains long-term uncertainty over that programme. Again, this committee receives reports that are quite in-depth around the Family Hubs programme and knows the positive impact that that programme is having in Lincolnshire. Again, we were selected to be a trailblazer for that. And we've really benefited and our families have benefited from that. 1.3.7 notes the current number of children in care as being 795 at the time of the report. It's actually 780 today and does always fluctuate. Our rate of children in care per 10,000 is 51, which compares favourably against a statistical neighbour of 67 and an England of 70. So those early prevention services are preventing children in Lincolnshire from having to come into care. However, those children that are coming into care are demonstrating increased complexity and increased needs, which means that the placements we're sourcing for them continue to be expensive. And we've also seen inflation and market rises that's leading to unfavourable market conditions for us in those placements. So the proposed cost pressure for children in care of 7.754 million is necessary to meet the current baseline commitments for the placements we've got with projections for placements we think we will see next year, factoring in those that will be exiting as well. We've also built into that budget a savings target of half a million. That's through the work that we're doing. Again, that's reported in this committee about transitioning children back to in-house placements, less expensive placements and potentially reunification with their families where it's all possible and where that's safe to do so. So we're being ambitious about that programme. We're continuing to invest in that programme and we're building that into the budget. So in terms of the additional areas of cost pressures in social care, we've got the national living wage and the inflation assumptions for the consumer price index of 1.4 million. You'll see at 1.310, we outline our strong core offer for internal foster carers. We know that there is a national shortage of foster carers and that we are a fostering first authority. We like to place children with families wherever possible. The government has increased the national minimum allowance in April 2023 and April 2024 and again for April 2025. This is in recognition of the increased costs being seen by fostering households and those who look after our children in care. And it reinforces that all households should be supported financially and emotionally in that volunteering role that they undertake. In the prior two years, Lincolnshire has applied the uplift across all of our fostering brackets and we're proposing to do the same again. That means that we continue to be as competitive as possible with the private fostering agencies and ensure that our people who are choosing to foster for Lincolnshire with Lincolnshire's children have that uplift and have that announcements. And that's creating a 0.387 million through the budget process. So moving on then to 1.312, you'll see a proposed cost pressure of 0.5 million relating to special guardianship orders. As this committee knows, special guardianship orders are where a child is placed within their family network for their care. It's seen as an important option to increase permanency for children. We know children have great success from being placed within that family network. But we need to support those families financially to meet those needs. So you'll see that cost pressure within there. We've also got 0.4 million cost pressure relating to the increasing costs of our provider contracts. And that's through contractual indexation or through hardship where providers have come forward to say that actually they're no longer able to operate within the financial envelope that we've had. 1.314 outlines the social worker apprenticeship programme and the final cost pressure we have for that of 0.139 million. That will be the last cost pressure in relation to the social worker apprenticeship programme and puts in base budget the programme that we know is helping us to ensure we're not reliant on expensive agency workers. And we are able to grow our own social workers, which we know, and again, that report's been through this committee, means that they are trained in Lincolnshire. They tend to come from Lincolnshire. We retain them afterwards and we have a really good impact from that programme. We've also proposed a further saving of 0.5 million from our social care legal costs. And that's as a result of reducing our section 31 preceding costs and pre-proceedings timescales. This is favourable, but we are seeing a rise in demand in our services. So we're confident about being able to do that. But overall, I think within the social care area, we are really painting that picture of increased demand, increased complexity, really difficult market for us to work in. So the proposed cost pressure of 7.754 million. Sorry. Just bear with me. Moving on to the capital programme. Sorry about that, I went back to the wrong page. The council maintains a 10-year capital programme and the capital investment is linked to longer-term programmes for spending power. The 10-year capital programme has been compiled in line with the principles that are set out in the council's capital strategy. Children's Services manage, maintain a comprehensive annual capital programme with relation to individual school conditions and maintenance projects. And that's overseen by the Children's Services Capital Programme Board. We've also got an allocation of provision for school basic need. And that's about additional seats we need for children across the county. And that's been confirmed at 21.5 million. We are working with that funding to make sure that we've got all our September 2026 school place pressures accounted for with solutions in place. At the time of writing the report, the government capital funding allocations for SEND and devolved capital formula have not been confirmed. The 24-25 allocations, however, for special educational needs are noted in the paper. And it's been estimated that we'll see funding within that kind of region. Moving on to 1.48. This committee has received detailed reports on the building communities of specialist provision. You'll note that remains within the capital programme. We've had phase two agreed at executive and that programme is on budget. And we'll see significant additional places across Lincolnshire for children with SEND. And we know that's something that we desperately need. The strategy is in response to the growth of the number of EHCP plans. And the council will consider the new government's national SEND reforms when we consider how we're going to spend them. There's been lots of indication that those reforms will look at how we support mainstream schools to be able to include more children with SEND within the mainstream setting. That's been an ambition of this council for some time now, about how we really support our mainstream schools so that children don't have to travel as far, can go to school with their peers. And we know that we see some really good outcomes when we do that. So we're going to watch those national reforms carefully. And Martin and his team are attending lots of national meetings at the moment to ensure that we're kept up to date. Children's Services, 1.412 in the report, has other capital funding earmarked within the programme and they're just outlined for you there. But again, these are capital programmes that you've had papers on. The Schools Mobiles Replacement, Short Say Children's Home and Foster Care Capital. So they're funding that will come through. Moving on to the school's budget, Lincolnshire's indicative dedicated schools grant allocation for 25-26 is 867.68 million. And that's used to support all schools in Lincolnshire, including local authority schools and academies. Our total schools block value is 621.24 million. So the council has agreed to adopt the National Fair of Funding due to the improved financial settlement for Lincolnshire schools. That's been to our schools forum and we've continued to adopt it each year since then. And Lincolnshire is one of the 123 councils across the country that are mirroring that formula and implementing it as soon as we can. So what we do is we look at where we can't afford to do the full uplifts. We look at how we can address that in terms of affordability. And those decisions go through our schools forum as well as through here. The government has recognised that in 25-26, the timescale for the publication of the national funding formula has been unprecedentedly late. And as they'd normally publish them in July to help with financial planning, that has meant that Mark's team and Martin's team have had to do some significant work with schools. We'll be going into a lot more detail in the schools paper around that. So I don't propose to talk significantly about that now, but happy to take questions on the content of the report. The ESFA has confirmed that mainstream schools' national funding formula is increasing by 2.23% per pupil on average. And that increase is based on formula factors and pupil characteristics. I think it's important to recognise whilst we're seeing those increases, we're also seeing the same cost pressures within schools and that overall there is a tightening of the fiscal funding for policy for schools. And that one of the examples of that is that schools will be required to budget for next year's pay award through their own settlement. They won't get that additionally. So moving on to 1.59. The government's 1 billion increase to send an alternative funding is equivalent to a 6% growth. Although that is welcomed, there is a kind of indication that that should help us to make change in the system. But at this stage, the Treasury is predicting that it's very likely it'll be used to fund in-year deficits that we're seeing across the country. There continues to be an increasing number of local authorities incurring deficit in their DSG. And it's estimated that the national debt is now at around 3.2 billion, despite increases year on year. There is a recognition, and I think you've probably seen lots of reporting this week in the news, around the sustainability of the SEND system and the need for national reforms. The scale of the deficits is causing concern to local government because we don't have a sustainable recovery plan and we don't have the levers in place to be able to address those deficits ourselves. Currently, local authorities are required to carry forward those overspends. And some local authorities, not Lincolnshire, have overrides in place to help at the moment keep those overspends off their books. And that's a challenging position for those local authorities. And I think it's important to recognise Lincolnshire's position is increasingly challenging as well. The high-needs block allocation in Lincolnshire is 140.9 million. That's an increase of 9 million. Local authorities see protection under the formula and will see a minimum increase of 7%. That does not go far enough to address the increase we're seeing in demand and the increase we're seeing in the cost of placements. And page 23 outlines some of the challenges that we're seeing. So the nature of the high-needs block service, really very much in line with that of children in care, very demand-driven, very driven by our statutory duties and difficult to change spending levels. So we are going to have to make some difficult decisions nationally and in Lincolnshire on all aspects of high-needs block spending to allow us to achieve a balanced and sustainable budget. Schools Forum did approve a transfer of 0.5% from the schools block, which equated to 3.1 million. That was a unanimous agreement by schools in recognition of the pressures that the council's seeing. And 1.520 outlines what the proposed spending of that monies will be. And you'll see that's about shifting the spend to early intervention, to intervening earlier, to supporting children to be maintained within mainstream provision wherever possible. Obviously, there is always a desire to remain in a balanced, sustainable budget in high needs. But just to recognise to the committee that that is getting increasingly difficult to do. So in terms of the early years box on 1.524, you'll see that our indicative funding is 100.496 million. And that supports seven streams, which are outlined there. And again, much of that is work that comes through this committee. And you do get your report on early years regularly. The government will be spending 8.4 billion on early years entitlement. So you know, we've had the paper here about the expansion of early years entitlement and the work we're doing in Lincolnshire to roll that out. That will continue to be the case under this new government. So in terms of further consultation, the budget proposals will be publicised on the council's website with an opportunity for the public to comment, and that is live now. All consultation comments and responses, including that of this committee, will be available to be considered when the executive makes its final budget proposals on the 4th of February 2025. In conclusion, I think you'll see these budget proposals reflect the estimated level of government funding and the proposed council tax increase of 2.99%. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather, for that very comprehensive overview of the budget presentation. Thank you very much indeed for that. I'd like to invite members of the committee now to comment on the report. Dr Van der Zee.
Thank you very much for the comprehensive overview. I was wondering what the potential impact is of moving towards a unitary authority in relation to the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's a very good question. I think the, I know outline modelling or assumptions have been considered, but nothing formalised. And I think obviously that is indicating some of the direction of travel isn't at a national level. But I think that at the moment, I think it's very much high-level assumptions and modelling that's not really at the moment in time to be able to be shared. But clearly, obviously, that is the direction of travel isn't at a national level.
Is there a possible timeframe that you know about?
Yes, so it's. Yeah, thank you. So in terms of the unitary, obviously, the principle of moving to a unitary is about efficiencies. It's about working in an efficient way and bringing all of those council services together. In terms of a timeline, I don't have one currently. That isn't something that I've prepared. And I think that's something that we don't know. It's dependent on lots of different factors.
Thanks very much. Councillor Smith, I believe you have a question.
Thank you, chairman. With your indulgence, I have three points. Excuse me.
As greedy as ever.
Given the demand-led nature of most of the children's budgets, you've already explained, Heather, especially around EHCPs and other costs. Children in care, for example, are often confident that the financial pressures noted in the report are accurate and we won't have a significant difference between existing budgets pressures at the end of the end year. And secondly, is lobbying, is any lobbying taking place directly with the government on the issue of the demand-led nature of children's services? And has any communication been sent to His Majesty's Government highlighting the damage to spending power the national insurance rises caused? This council, coupled with the removal of RSG, which is Revenue Support Grant for anybody listening, funding which is circa 9 million. Are we not really at risk, as you've already basically alluded to, Heather, almost into a perfect storm? And finally, I note, chairman, 1.59, the increase in SEND funding. And finally, I note, Chairman, at one point five nine, the increase in SEND funding, as Heather's alluded to, which is welcome. But as the report says, it's intended, irrelevant of its intended purpose, the report states it will likely be used to fund in-year deficits, as highlighted in point one, point five, point one seven. Is LCC on the verge of a DSG deficit? And is it not, excuse me, let me check what I've just put there?
Okay, have you finished your questions?
Not quite. I am at the end, nearly.
When councillor Smith finishes questions, yeah.
Are we not on the verge of a DSG deficit? And is it not, although it's not through our own fault, any fault of our own, what can be done, if anything, to ensure that we are not following what many other county councils have had to go through, which is having to essentially rely on the safety valve, Chairman, and keep the deficit off the council's accounts to be solvent? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mrs Bradwell first.
Yeah, I just wanted to come in just to say to Tom. I mean, I think Heather's gone through the budget. It is, I don't think in all the years that, well, I think there's probably been a couple of years which have been probably slightly worse. But, you know, the thing is, as Tom's alluded to and Heather has as well, the fact is that we're not in control of people wanting the service that we offer, whether that's children who are at risk of being abused or whether it's children who need to go to a specialist school for their education. And I think it is, it is, you know, probably worrying, but I think we've done what we can and hopefully, you know, the schools are behind us as well. I mean, we could have our schools up in arms and saying, we can't manage and this, that and the other. You know, we haven't had that. We've got schools who are also realising that actually there is no more money from government at the moment. So, you know, I think it is about trying to do what we can. And, you know, usually, I'm not, I'm not blowing our own trumpet, but usually the county council does do very well in trying to make a round ring a square. And, you know, it's hard. And I have to be honest with you, it's hard, but we're going to get through it. We're going to ensure that children have a good education and our children in care are looked after.
Thank you, Heather. Do you wish to say further comment?
Thank you. So in terms of the demand led budget, councillor Smith, yes, I'm confident that we've modelled that accurately. We've done a lot of work. We've thought carefully about projections, but it is, it is an art, not a science. And we know, for example, where children enter the youth justice system and have to be remanded, that's a really expensive placement. We know that if a large sibling group comes in, that's an expensive placement for us. So yes, it's accurate. It's as accurate as it possibly can be. And the teams have done a lot of work on the projections and Mark's team have worked really hard. It's really detailed behind the scenes. So I'm absolutely confident that it's accurate. I'm not expecting there to be a significant difference. And we've managed within budget for many, many years. I do agree with councillor Bradwell, this is probably the most challenging period that we're having. And I think rural councils are having a really difficult time at the moment. But I don't, I'm not projecting that to be a significant difference. There are loads of variables within that. I can't guarantee it. In terms of the lobbying, yes, we work really hard. We work hard through the F40 group. We work through the, which is the lowest funded, the lowest forty funded local authorities in the country. We work hard through the Association of Directors of Children's Services and I chair the Education Committee for that group nationally. So we've got a good voice on there. We work hard through the Chief Execs Group. So again, Debbie Barnes, our chief exec, is the National Representative for Children. So I would say we do, we're involved in those conversations at a national level as much as we possibly can be and will continue to do that. We see real benefit from that. In terms of the increase in SEND, I think, I think I can't tell you that we're not heading for a deficit. I think everybody's heading for a deficit. We know we've had some in-year structural deficits that we've been able to manage with reserves. That will not be the case going forward. So I think, you know, it's, we're in a much better position than the vast majority of local authorities in the country. So I don't want to be sending alarm bells, but we desperately need the national reform to come so that we can ensure that we're spending this money in a way that has best impact for children in SEND. As I've said before, there's numerous national reports that say we're spending a huge amount of money on this system. It's not enough still and children are not making the progress that we'd want them to make. And so, you know, I don't think I can tell you we won't have deficits on the high needs block.
Thank you very much. councillor Cleaver, I believe you have a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr Chair. If I just may first of all comment on the previous conversation. I think looking at the figures, a ten per cent, being able within a balanced budget to find ten million pounds additional funding for the children of social care budget is actually quite an achievement. And I think it's incredibly prudent and it's good that we're in a position to do that. And I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. My specific questions. Holiday activity and food funding, do we have any news on that, Heather, going forward to twenty twenty five, twenty six? Because I think it ran out, runs out this year. The other question, and I know we're going to discuss it in more detail when we discuss school attendance, but the EHE, the elected home education monies, the extra one point naught four million for carrying out new guidelines from the DFE, obviously is, again, being very prudent in terms of planning for that new advice and coming in. Can you tell us a little bit about whether, first of all, is that additional government funding to acknowledge the fact they've given us extra responsibilities, extra things to do and therefore they're funding it? And irrespective of whether it is or not, exactly how much, or you may want to cover this up on the other item, but exactly what is that going to be spent on? What additional inspections and duties are we going to be able to discharge with that extra one million?
Thank you. Thanks councillor Cleaver. So I agree with you, you know, we are in a really fortunate position to have had the ten million cost pressures met in these budget proposals. I think this council has had a kind of long term commitment to their children's services and I think, you know, it's really welcome that we can see that in there. In terms of the holiday activities fund, sadly, no, we haven't had any announcements yet. However, we haven't had any announcements that it's ceasing. It is due to cease, but we haven't had any clarification either way. So we're keeping everything crossed that we're going to get an announcement that will clarify that soon. Can I just ask councillor Cleaver, when you refer to the naught point four million, can I just clarify which?
Sorry, one point.
One point, and where is that? Sorry.
Sorry, I'll try and find it.
Sorry, I'm just trying, making sure I answered the question.
On the one five four, where was the reduction of school cost? Yeah, one point one cost pressures, table A on page fourteen.
Page fourteen.
And sorry, yes, it's one point oh six million, sorry. Section one point two point three.
So that's, that's a cost pressure, oh, sorry, around EHCP. I'm with you, okay.
EHE, sorry, isn't it?
So EHCP.
Oh, sorry.
So, oh, EHC, I see, sorry. I thought, I thought you were referencing elective home education. So EHC is the Education Health and Care Plans. It's the SEND assessments. So at this point, I am confident that that's enough. It's not new monies, it's a cost pressure we have raised to the council to say that it is costing us more money and the council has agreed to fund. So that is around when someone writes to us and applies to have an EHCP assessment, we need to have a range of things happen at that point, including an educational psychology assessment, writing out to health providers. So it's about the coordination of that. And we've seen such a rise in demand for assessment that we've needed that money. So that's not new government money. And we do predict that will be enough to meet the rises as they currently are. But accepting everything I've said about the SEND system, really, that will just continue to rise unless we see some changes nationally. Apologies for my confusion. Thank you.
Apologies for my confusion because I confused EHC with EHE. So the question still remains, given that we've got to do these extra checks for EHE applicants, has the government actually put any money in for that? Or we've got to find that to get that extra cost out of our own resources?
Thank you councillor Cleaver. So yes, the government's announced in the Children's Wellbeing Bill some additional responsibilities for local authorities. At this point, the bill's had its second reading in Parliament, has gone into committee where it will be scrutinised further. We have not had any indication of what funding will be allocated with that. It will be a new burden. Therefore, we will expect that there will be a new burdens assessment to address the costs of that. But at this point, we're not exactly clear what we will be required to do and what funding we will have to do there. But we are involved in the national group that is challenging and working with the department over that.
Thank you and apologies again for my confusion.
Thanks very much. Do we have any other questions from members? No further questions and comments. Therefore, I'll move on to the proposal. I propose that the committee supports the children's services budget proposals for twenty twenty five, twenty six and that our comments are passed on to the executive for consideration on the fourth of February. As usual, our comments have been captured by Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, for passing on to the executive. Can you please raise your hand if you agree with the proposal? That's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. And the lights are supposedly being sorted out as we speak. They're gradually coming back on, so the subtle lighting will be no longer with us. If we can move on to item six on the agenda, which is mainstream schools funding twenty twenty five, twenty six. This item, which can be found on pages twenty seven to thirty eight of your agenda pack, invites the committee to consider whether it supports the principles and approach outlined in the report regarding mainstream schools funding for twenty twenty five, twenty six. And again, to recap on the actions required of us as a committee, firstly, we have to consider the contents of this report and determine whether the committee supports the recommendations being made at the Executive Council for Children's Services, Community Safety, Procurement and Migration on the basis of the principles and approach as set out in the report. And secondly, agree any additional comments to be passed to the Executive Council in relation to this item. And so without further delay, I'd like to invite Mark Popperwell, Strategic Finance Lead, Children's Services, to present the report. Over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. Yeah, as the Chair outlines, this consideration is the proposed mainstream schools funding arrangements. So this is for maintained schools and Lincolnshire Academy schools for twenty five, twenty six. So since the introduction of the government's National Funding Formula in two thousand eighteen, nineteen for mainstream schools, Lincolnshire has adopted that National Funding Formula due to the increased funding levels that we have received. The fundamental principles for next year have not changed. And I think like Heather referred to in terms of the unprecedented sort of timescales and therefore minimal changes have taken place from a national funding level relating to mainstream schools funding. So the current Executive Council decision back from twenty twenty one remains in place to adopt the National Funding Formula. And each year, the local authority has to consider its application and also the affordability of adopting that National Funding Formula. And it remains the council's decision to set the school funding formula within the department's funding framework. So by way of background, the National Funding Formula was there as a purpose to try and create consistency in funding across all schools, ensuring a fair settlement for schools, rather than each local authority having their own separate funding formula arrangements. Local authorities were strongly encouraged to move to that National Funding Formula arrangement and to move towards a direct funding formula whereby all schools would be funded on that national rate. Schools block allocations of the dedicated schools grant, in terms of allocations to local authorities are aggregated at school level. And you can see that in table one, where Lincolnshire sits on a national perspective. So for primary and secondary ranked, they've been fairly static from a national context for twenty five, twenty six. Primary is slightly higher than the national average, secondary slightly below. And this is all fundamentally based on the pupil led characteristics. So essentially, the characteristics of those proxy indicators such as free school meals, deprivation, privetainment, which then determines our overall quantum of funding. So moving on to page twenty nine, the, in terms of the overall funding announcements, so additional two point three billion into mainstream schools, of which one point three million is going through that National Funding Formula and one billion goes through to the high needs arrangements. So overall, core school funding will increase to sixty three point nine billion in twenty five, twenty six. Say the survey has confirmed that mainstream schools funding is increasing by two point two, three per pupil on average compared to the prior year. And that's relating to formula factor increases in terms of the monetary values, but also pupil led characteristics. And this increase also includes the full year effect of the teacher's pay award, so five twelfths of that pay award relating to the September twenty four decision. Overall, what we're seeing in terms of schools funding is a tightening of that fiscal funding policy for schools, as indeed councils as well. And at this stage, the schools have, will also, there's an indication that schools will have to meet next year's pay award within this overall funding arrangement. As in prior years, an additional grant has been provided in year. The employer national insurance change will be, will be, schools will be allocated an additional grant for that, that additional burden. So one hopes that actually from a macro level of allocations, that broadly in line with what schools are seeing at more of a local level. So the schools block allocation, which is used to determine schools funding, that's six hundred and twenty one million. And all local authorities, they have to move towards this direct formula. And it's applied via a transitioning whereby local authorities not replicating or mirroring the formula have to move ten per cent closer to it. In twenty four, twenty five, a hundred and twenty three local authorities are mirroring that local national funding formula. So that's plus or minus two point five per cent of the National Funding Formula factors. And Lincolnshire is within, is mirroring that local authority National Funding Formula and therefore can set it within that range. So moving on to page thirty. Just by way of reflecting on the current year in terms of twenty four, twenty five, Lincolnshire did have an affordability gap in terms of adopting that National Funding Formula, one point four five nine million. And that was addressed through a reduction in the school growth budget, which is allocated to support temporary or permanent expansions in schools. And through the national formula, we actually had additional monies and were able to fulfil our statutory duty with a reduced budget and therefore was able to allocate monies to that National Funding Formula. And then the remainder of that was through a downward adjustment of the key stage eight weighted pupil unit from that of the national formula. And that's what decision was taken for the current year. And just by a reason and explanation of why there's often a schools block and affordability challenge, and this is down to the government's application of lagged funding arrangements whereby local authorities' allocations, school block allocations are based on the prior census, so say October twenty three. But what we have to do as a local authority is to allocate funding to schools based on the latest, which would be the October twenty four. And what we've seen over the years, particularly since the pandemic and obviously the cost of living rises, is that we've actually seen a number, quite a significant increase in those eligible for some of those formula factors, particularly free school meals and free school meals ever six. And that's where we've seen that increase and that's what's created that shortfall. So then move on to twenty five, twenty six in terms of key updates on page thirty. Typically, all school formula factors are increased by circa point five per cent, so referring back to that sort of much. to that sort of much tighter fiscal policy. The minimum funding guarantee, which is a protection at a per pupil level, so that's not the number of pupils, but actually the the actual per pupil value, and that's been set at 0% for 25-26. And the proposal for 25-26 is to adopt that 0%, which is the higher end of that range. The government has rolled in the 24-25 teachers' pay grants relating to 23-24 and 24-25, and then also the teachers' pay pension increase of 5%, which was a separate grant in 24-25. That has also been added into the national funding formula. So we've seen a reduction in those grants, and essentially that money is now being transferred into the national funding formula, which will aid schools' financial planning. Other key points to note in terms of the the application of the formula, continuation of the primary rents factor, and obviously that will be part of that decision, which is an exceptional criteria, and that is to support those schools that have have to pay rents, and it ended over a certain percentage of their budget, and it's seen as exceptional to support those schools, so they're not unfairly disadvantaged by their their setting arrangements. The local authority will be continued to adopt the school growth arrangements, and they're they're based on the school reorganisation policies, and that's supporting those with temporary and permanent pan expansions. And those policies determine a level of funding to support that on an operational perspective. A falling role factor, funding, sorry, has been granted by central government, and it's for local authorities to determine whether they operate them. The local authority at this point will will hold a budget for falling roles. However, in terms of an application of that, it will be something that sort of panel officers will review in accordance with the DFE grant conditions. And very much the criteria is about whether those falling role will see then in future years a growth, and it's about the falling roles factor is about supporting, structuring the schools to enable them to hold those sort of classroom arrangements at that level, knowing that pupil numbers will be growing in the short term. So local authority officers will obviously will need to to review in terms of that evidence base before supporting it through that route. And also, notional special educational needs, this is a budget that is within the school's delegated budget, and within there it identifies a percentage by each formula factor to determine a notional SE and allocation for for each school. And that's there about to there to support and fulfilling their duty for special educational needs, particularly the first 6,000 pounds for those with NEHC, and also those on send support. Currently, in 24-25, Lincolnshire's rate is 3,324 on average, and the department have set a target of 3,500 per annum, of which Lincolnshire obviously are slightly below that. So at the moment, we're reviewing that, and we'll be consulting with schools, which will be part of this decision to determine how we can get it more comparable to that of the DFE rate. And one of the main areas of changes is likely to be relating to prior attainment, where the DFE considered that that to be a really good proxy indicator for low cost and high instance send, of which Lincolnshire is 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 a little bit lower than that, and therefore that one hopes that that will address that gap. So schools block continues to be ring fenced, and the local authorities can transfer up to 0.5% with agreement from their schools forum. Anything higher than that would have to go to the secretary of state. As we've alluded to earlier about the financial challenges within the high needs block, Lincolnshire sought to transfer 0.5% and engaged with the schools through a consultation, and received schools form approval on the 14th of November for a school block transfer of circa 3 million pounds. And and within the previous paper, I identified those initiatives to try and support Lincolnshire in securing a sustainable budget in the medium term. That is an annual decision, and therefore if Lincolnshire wanted to in future years, we'd have to go through that same process in terms of consultation and schools form approval. Appendix A picks up the formula factor comparisons by way of just of which you can see there, the additional grants being added in, but overall, small percentage change following that. So in summary, the funding formula principles are not changing for 25-26, having received schools forum and the sector's support to continue with adopting that national formula. That is the county council's intention to to continue on that journey. Financial modelling has been undertaken, and we're still going through the process of sort of doing those checks and balances and also school level analysis. But just to give you an update in terms of where we are prior to submitting to the department for compliance purposes, overall, it is showing a 1.9 million affordability gap to adopt that national funding formula. And what we have seen, again, is is an increase in free school meals and free school meals ever six in this latest census, which has created that funding gap. We will be releasing 0.8 million, so 800,000 from the school growth fund to support some of that affordability gap, of which that just leaves shorter, just just shorter 1.1 million, of which the local authority needs to address as an unfunded gap. What that would mean is a 0.36% reduction in the age-weighted pupil unit value, which ranges from circa about 14 pounds in primary level to a key stage four of 22 pounds per pupil. So that's an indication of where we're at at the moment, and so doing checks and balances just to make sure that's all okay. In terms of the the 0.5 transfer in terms of the schools block, that will result in about 1.4% reduction in in age-weighted pupil unit. Therefore, overall, in terms of how we've adopted the national funding formula, it would mean that we've adopted all factors barring a downward adjustment of the age-weighted pupil unit across the sectors of 1.764 million. This will be obviously included and finalised within within the final report to the executive councillor. Also, just to add, the local authority did consult not only on the affordability gap and the mechanisms for doing that, which was that downward adjustment, and we felt that was the right approach because it provides a sector-wide solution, and also it tries to reduce the impact at an overall school level. The local authority also consulted on the minimum funding guarantee, of which I've referred to, the primary rents factor, and also schools block of which we which we received approval for. So overall, the committee is asked to note the the comments and the the actions in the report, and to to support the principles for executive council approval in terms of the adoption of the national funding formula, along with the the mechanisms to address the affordability. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark, for taking us through that. We now move to the time for members to comment or ask questions. Do we have any comments or questions that members wish to ask? I'd just like to kick off, kick off, oh, councillor Cleaver, go ahead.
Sorry, so just, obviously, the formula that you've just explained to us is very, very complicated, and I have to say, although I consider myself to be someone who's reasonably numerate, I did find the table quite baffling. I had nowhere to start with the question, really. In terms of the way the funding formula works, how do we, how does it accommodate any difference between planned numbers and actual achieved numbers? I mean, obviously, you're working, you're funding effectively a an academic year which goes across two financial years. So you you know what the pupil numbers are on the 1st of April because it's an existing cohort. If a school massively under or over recruits its pan the following October, in other words, halfway through the financial year, are adjustments made? How does the how does the formula compensate those who've under recruited and and deal with those who've under recruited and and make the necessary and appropriate movement of funds?
Okay, thanks very much. So in terms of the overall funding, the funding is based on the latest October census. For maintained schools, that means for October 24, that will be funding for April 25 to March 25. Academies is slightly more lagged than that, and that's based on, so October census 24, but that will determine their funding for September 25 to August 26. What we are, so through a lagged arrangement, and through that, it does enable schools to plan for that, so it gives them that stability going forward. But what it does is that schools do need to respond to those changes, so it gives them that predictability for that year, but schools, through their scenario planning and through their pupil planning, need to respond to that. So there is no in-year monies that is allocated for drops in role. So that's where having sensible reserves to draw upon is important, but it is a pupil-led formula, and that's and that's something that the government have driven. So therefore, it does, it does mean that obviously it does flex from year to year, and that prudent planning, scenario planning for schools is really important, particularly now with that tightened fiscal policy as well. So tighter school budgets, and therefore that would mean that need to be even smarter in those arrangements. As I say, we do have that falling role falling role as an option, but there are very tight DFE requirements with that, whereby you need to be seeing that there's evidence that through the SCAP return that actually numbers are going to increase. So it's very, very controlled. But essentially, the 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 formula and the way it's moved to that national arrangement does reduce financial flexibility or flexibility to local authorities to respond to those in in-year changes. So those arrangements have subsequently ended, other than school growth, which is planned arrangements, so therefore it's very much on schools to manage that. And through our team and the county council, we do support our maintained schools through monitoring interventions. So if schools are finding financial troubles, then we'll support them through the education teams, school improvement teams, and finance and HR to work towards solutions to make them more sustainable as well.
Thank you for that. The other thing I was going to mention, and I apologise if it doesn't come under this item, but I missed it from the previous one, but we've had no reference made to the costs and budget for school transport so far today. And I've always been hearing that that is a major cost pressure and difficulty for us. Could anybody comment on that in terms of the the budget, please?
It doesn't fall within the remit of this committee now, it shifted to highways, but I don't know whether Heather wants to make a comment on that.
Yeah, just just to say, yes, it did use to fall in this committee, and and we've brought together the functionality of providing the transport with the budget, so it doesn't come under here. But the 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 budget papers going to that committee are noting a 5.5 million cost pressure for home-to-school transport.
Yes, I agree with councillor Cleaver's comment. Ouch. Yes, indeed. Councillor, Mrs Redwell, did you miss a comment to this point?
To explain, and I know Mark has explained, but I think with school budgets, the governors of the school are the ones who, you know, actually manage the budget. And clearly, if there is budget issues, severe budget issues, they would come to the county council to actually discuss that with officers. But in the main, it never used to be like this, donkey's years ago, when I first started to be a governor, and I have been around a long time. But it it is slightly changed now. But I mean, there is, I sat as a governor for many years on a primary school, and many years, some years, you know, if your pupil numbers fell, then your budget sort of reduced. So it is, it's very important that governors and head teachers do actually settle, you know, put a good settlement in like we are now for children's services. But there is support from the county council for schools, I would just like to say that.
Thanks very much. Dr Vandese, you have a question?
In relation to the point, I think there's a challenge for schools when after the census date, they have an influx of pupils, especially pupils with higher 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 needs. And so that puts a lot of cost pressures on the school that are not, that cannot really be taken into account by the by the by the funding formula. So that's that's, if if you've got an influx of pupils after the October date, that's really a challenge. Just just as a, you know, clarification as well.
Heather, you wish to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I think we recognise that for a very small minority of schools, that that is a challenge. I think we used to have flexibility when it was a local-led formula, but the national funding formula does does not provide us that flexibility.
I mean, and just to also add that there is a mobility factor within there. So actually, if schools consistently see that, there is additional monies that go through the formula to recognise that, whereas transient sort of families. So so that there is a response in that. And also for additional funding for send. So for example, if if children do have an EHC, that award, then that will be allocated mid-year to support those costs.
That is true, but before you have, before you go through the procedure of having that recognised, you still have to support the child.
Thanks very much. Do we have any further questions or comments before I move to proposal? No, we're not seeing anyone. Everyone's satisfied? That's great. Thanks very much. I'll therefore move to the proposal. I propose that we support the recommendations being made to the executive councillor for children's services, community safety, procurement and migration on the basis and principles and approach as set out in the report, and that our comments be passed on for consideration by the executive councillor. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Seer, thank you very much. The comments from the committee's discussion on this report will be recorded by Tracy Johnson, senior scrutiny officer, for passing on to the executive councillor. When I vote on this item, all those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That's carried. We'll now move on to item seven, which is children and young people's youth housing service contract. And this item can be found on pages 39 to 52 of your agenda pack, and it is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a key decision by the executive on the 4th of February 2025. And just to remind ourselves of the actions required, we're required to firstly, consider the attached report and to determine whether the committee supports the recommendations to the executive as set out in the report, and secondly, to agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. The two recommendations to the executive are set out actually on page 42 of the agenda pack. And without delay, I'd like to invite Charlotte Gray, head of service, children's strategic commissioning, to present the report. We also have Bridie Fletcher, senior commissioning officer, children's strategic commissioning, and Andrew Morris, head of service, leaving care in attendance to help answer any questions. So it's over to you, Charlotte.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So Lincolnshire County Council has a contract with the charity NACRO to deliver the youth housing service, which is also known as NEST. The contract runs from January, the 1st of January 2021 until the end of December this year, and there's no further option within the current terms and conditions of that contract to extend the agreement. The forecast cost of the service in this financial year is 1.75 million, excluding potential voids, which are explained in the paper. The youth housing service provides high-quality, suitable and safe, supported accommodation for 16- and 17-year-olds who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and also for children in care and care leavers up to the age of 21. In Lincolnshire, we commissioned 72 units of accommodation, and they're available mainly across Lincoln, Boston and Grantham area in mixed styles of accommodation. So there's foyer-style accommodation, as well as shared living and solo properties. The service offers over 100,000 hours of tailored support per year to help develop young people's independence and prepare them for adult life. And that can include rebuilding relationships with family to support young people to move back home where appropriate. Also, help with access to other services, supporting them, young people to access education, employment and training, support with independent living skills and healthy life choices, and transition into future accommodation options. The service performance is good. However, performance data is indicating that whilst the broad capacity of the service is right, the type of accommodation mix isn't isn't quite right, and that needs, that will need changing. Over the last 12 to 18 months, the council has seen a rising demand for accommodation for young people with a higher complexity of need, who are not suitable to live in that foyer-style accommodation. The capacity of the solo properties that we have available through NEST has been fully utilised, and so we've needed to commission some other supported accommodation from other providers. A commissioning review of the youth housing service, as you would expect with the contract coming to its end, has been well underway, and we had planned to And we had planned to come forward in December 2024 for democratic decision-making in terms of the future model and commissioning options. However, in the meantime, what we've seen is the regulation of supported accommodation by Ofsted come in from October 2023. And that has created some new challenges within the supported accommodation market. In September 2024, Ofsted commenced full inspections of new provisions. And it has become clear that the service model that was going to be recommended through the commissioning review would need some potential change, and that there were other areas that we now needed to consider more broadly in light of the Ofsted regulations. We now need more time to understand the impact of those regulations, which are resulting in more providers unwilling to support young people with more complexity of need because they're concerned it will impact their Ofsted registration. Directors of Children's Services across the country have been written to by Ofsted in October 2024, clearly outlining their concerns that there are young people who need to be living in residential care, who are actually living in supported accommodation. And the impact of that is on not only the children's residential care market, but also the adult care market too. And it means that our supported accommodation providers are very nervous at the moment when supporting young people with a higher complexity of need. I would like to reassure scrutiny that from our perspective, that that assessment in terms of young people's needs is undertaken prior to a placement being made in terms of whether they require a residential care provision or supported accommodation. But the market is nervous, and we are seeing that in terms of challenges with making placements. So what we want to do then is understand, obviously, what that means for the types of accommodation we're going to need to have available. And that's not only within the youth housing service, but looking at our own supported accommodation. We have two provisions that the local authority runs. We also have supported lodgings, which are currently provided by Bernardo's through the Leaving Care Service, which has been in-sourced to the local authority from the 1st of April. We also have staying-put options to allow young people living with foster carers to stay living with them beyond the age of 18. So we need to consider all of these options and what we need to do in terms of providing our own. And then clearly, what we need to do to procure those services from the market and making sure that the market is able to respond to those needs. We also want to, as part of that expanded review, look at any other opportunities that we have around integrating accommodation pathways between adults and childrens. And with the in-sourcing of the Leaving Care Service and some of the accommodation workers who are part of that offer, how we make sure that we maximise those staff between adults and childrens as well. We also, as I've just said, need to do that market development piece of work in a shifted market than it was last year. So the governance of that review work, it will be through the Children in Care Transformation Programme, which you will all be familiar with. There is a risk if the council moves ahead and recommissioned the youth housing service now in isolation from those other areas, that we may not be commissioning the service that actually meets the needs of our young people. And therefore, that we won't be delivering value for money, which is obviously a significant concern. Due to this, an exception to extend the current youth housing service contract is being sought for a period of up to 15 months to allow time for that broader review to be completed and then for the subsequent decision-making process and for procurement to be completed. And the proposed timescales are set out in the report. So hopefully, you can see how that time would be spent. The Public Contract Regulations 2015 allow for a modification to lawfully extend a contract where certain conditions set out in the regulations are met. In this instance, it has been determined that Regulation 72.1B and C, which are set out in more detail in the report, can be applied to lawfully extend that service. It's been deemed that the grounds for those regulations are met due to unforeseen developments detailed in the report, including rising demand and complexity of need and the impact of the recent Ofsted regulation on the market, as well as the recent decision to in-source the council's Leaving Care Service, all which provide an economic and technical justification as to why a change of provider cannot therefore be made in readiness for a new contract start upon the current contract-end date. The Executive has the power to approve an extension of a contract with an estimated total value over the light-touch regime value. The estimated total contract value for the youth housing service over the lifetime of the contract is 8.4 million pounds. The original value has increased by 4.4%, but that's in line with terms and conditions of the agreement and due to inflationary pressures linked to Ofsted regulation costs, utilities and staff wage increases. Overall, based on the 24/25 cost of the service, the extension value would be in the region of 2.19 million pounds for that 15-month period. The provider could, however, request an inflationary price increase as per the terms and conditions of the contract. But based on current indices, this would be at around 1.7%, although obviously, no direct negotiation can occur until a formal decision is made. So obviously, we need to reserve the right that that would fluctuate based on negotiation. However, we've worked closely with finance to ensure that that's been built into budget setting for next year and that there would be budget available to support that. We have considered other options, so allowing the contract to end at the end of December without recommissioning a service. As you'll see, there are statutory requirements for us to deliver these services. What that would mean is that we would need to commission on an individual basis, supported accommodation. And the unit cost of that is much higher. So it wouldn't be best value for the council to do that in that interim period. The other option is to go ahead and recommission the service as planned. However, as I've described, the current model, we don't feel would be fully right based on those new developments. And again, we don't feel that that, in the long run, would be the right use of the council's resources. And we would rather take the time now to get it right and make sure what we're buying is the right thing. Overall, then, in terms of the recommendations that have been set out, we're looking for the Executive to approve the contract extension for that period of 15 months so that we can complete that wider review and then obviously, any onward commissioning. And then also to delegate to the Executive Director of Children's Services in consultation with the Executive Councillor, the authority to take all decisions necessary to progress the finalising of the contract extension. And that's everything. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Charlotte, for taking us through that. I'd like to invite members of the committee to comment or ask questions on the report. Do we have any questions? councillor Smith?
Thank you. Very brief one, Chairman. Do you think the contractors will ask for an inflationary uplift as per the terms of reference and the allowances within the contract?
Hi. I suspect it's within the ability of the terms and conditions under an extension to do so. We work very closely with the provider in terms of open book accounting through contract management. So we have a very good knowledge in terms of what the services are costing. I expect that they probably will. But that will be for us to ensure that that is, you know, it's an inflation that's in line with an increase in actual cost.
Thank you very much. councillor Matthews?
The paper's well-written. You explain it all clearly. And I'm particularly interested in this balance imbalance on the provision that is made of the type of housing, foyer-style housing and so. You, in your report, say you're waiting on government legislation to become clearer about the nature of that. Who will own this housing? At the moment, we've got some Lincolnshire County Council housing that is applied. We're seeking to outsource from that to housing that we don't have. Is it intended that we will build our own housing and then reuse that? I'm just interested in that because it's all a little bit grey. It's not any hint of criticism. I'm just really intrigued because there's quite a big cost issue there.
Yeah, so that's part of what we need to determine through the review. So just for clarity, we're not waiting in terms of, from a governance perspective, around regulation. I think what we're seeing is full inspections have only just started in a market where they've not had any of the regulation before. And so we're seeing, I guess, a knee-jerk nervousness around the placing of children, particularly with complex needs. And so we're almost needing to let things settle to understand as more providers go through inspection, what that means, and then work with the market so that, you know, there would be no point in us trying to get lots and lots of really highly complex beds if the market are saying, we don't want to accommodate those children. We already have a different array of, so we've got our in-house provision. We've got two of those settings. And we already use the market externally, supported lodgings and staying-put. So there's already a broad spectrum of provision for those young people. What we now need to understand is, so if, for example, we need more children that are going to have to go into residential care, that's an impact on the residential care market. What does that mean in terms of cost and what we should do ourselves or buy? And then equally, from supported accommodation, might it be more cost-effective for us to increase the in-house provision versus the market? Or vice versa? Is it more cost-effective for us to buy from the market? So there's still a lot of questions, but because the cohort is changing, we need to do that real modelling work to understand where our money is best used.
Thank you very much. And that's exactly, if you like, the number, my slight anxiety is we could become a hostage to fortune here, depending on increased demand, but having to lease accommodation from external providers where rents and provisions are skyrocketing. I'd like to learn a bit more about this. Clearly, it doesn't affect the signing of the thing, but those future risks, I think, are an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Smith?
Thank you. Just to go back slightly on to what councillor Matthews was saying. Is there not then, based on what's been said actually, Chairman, there is an even greater risk that I can have in purview and fear that because of the regulations, the market could quite simply turn around and take its ball home and go, we're not playing anymore. And then we're left holding the proverbial baby going, oh dear, what the heck are we going to do? This has happened in other areas where things like, in terms of housing in generally, when they've done things around requirements for AHP certificates being a certain standard, the number of houses, and that's a very basic thing, Chairman, in comparison to the complexities around caring for children with needs and the regulations on this. They have plummeted. There are houses that were being used to be rented that now can't be. Is there not a very similar risk that we are going to have quite a nasty shock? Because quite rightly, these providers are looking going, well, I don't want to lose my accreditation because if I do, I lose my job, my income, whatever you wish to call it. So is there, in the review, is there something in the working sort of going on saying, we may have to step in directly ourselves if the market doesn't want to play ball? And have we looked at how we would do that if that became necessary?
Thank you. I'll start answering, I think Andy wanted to come in as well. So I think what I would say about our local market is that we've got very good relationships with them. They've demonstrated that they're very flexible. And NACRO, as the provider of the current contract, have been incredibly willing, as we've seen a change in needs and where young people want to be accommodated, in moving that forward. And so I have a higher level of confidence in the local market wanting to continue to work with us. I really do. But obviously, at the moment, we've had a reliance beyond the local market because of the way that the different structures of the properties. So, and I think it's the broader market where there's a little bit more nervousness. And the time is needed to try and understand that. You know, we obviously, with inspections in October and us needing to go through democratic decision-making in December, we're really worried about getting it wrong at that point in time. So more work is needed when I think we'll be able to give a more articulate and planned response. But my nervousness isn't the local market as such. And we wouldn't want to make recommendations, obviously, where we felt that we were having to step in. The market will want to supply. They will want to. But they will also want to do so in a way that they feel is safe for them as organisations.
Just in relation to the question about nervousness of the market and the principle of the market taking the ball home and saying, we can't play this game anymore. There's an ongoing conversation through the National Children's Bureau that we're part of around speaking to the regulator as well as providers about what this means, what the transition between residential and supported accommodation looks like. Because what we've identified with the regulator, the regulations they've bought in, is that they don't necessarily meet and build the acceptance that there will be a point of transition within it. And we're getting some language from the centre to say that we understand at times there will be the need to provide something that's akin to care as long as there's a plan to step that down. So we need to navigate that with everybody and engage with the market and working with ourselves. Part of this review, we can build a model that can meet all those nuances that are coming out to try and help us understand the regulations. And I think what we'll probably seize is a review of the regulations in the short term and the medium term to take account of what we've found. And then the second to that is, the inspections, although were started in September, none have actually taken place, mainly because the regulator's still working through the backlog of applications to become supportive accommodation providers. So if there's any confidence here that there's a large number of providers wanting to come into this area, they're just trying to get regulated so they can come to the market and be part of the discussion. So I'm confident that the provision's growing. We need to work out how we fit into that.
Thank you. Do we have any other further questions or comments? Just one I'd like to ask. Looking at the Units of Accommodation 72, I think it's mentioned in the report, and they're available at three locations, Lincoln, Boston and Grantham. Are there any reasons why it's just these three locations? And when you're doing the review, would it be possible to consider provision in more areas? I'm just thinking like of the themes of accessibility and closeness to where people are and their family and friends. If there's any option there to have a look at maybe diversifying it a bit?
Yes, part of the review process back when we procured this, all those years ago, we engaged directly with the profile of the young people that are coming to us, speaking to all of our providers, partners, having a look. And part of this supportive accommodation review is going to be looking at where referrals and requests for accommodation are coming from. And as it stands, what we're experiencing now and what we experienced back when this was last procured does fit that these are the right locations for that type of accommodation. But to marry alongside that, with the in-sourcing of the Leaving Care Service, we've also got supported lodgings coming into our portfolio. So there's other options to look at other than just what we procure through a supported accommodation contract that might meet some of those gaps across, say, around the kind of the East Coast area away from Boston. But what we're understanding, what we're seeing is that that's the need, and it's still reflected today from what we did in 2021.
Thanks very much for that. If we don't have any further questions, oh, Heather, did you wish to comment? No, okay. If we don't have any further questions and comments, I'd like to move to the proposal, which is, I propose that we support the two recommendations to the Executive and that our comments are passed on to the Executive. Can I have a seconda, please, councillor Seer? Comments in the committee's decision will, as usual, be recorded by Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, for passing on to the Executive. We'll now vote on the item. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That's carried. I propose that we have our 10-minute break now and we reconvene at 22:12. Thank you very much. Welcome back as we reconvene this meeting. Thank you everyone for returning promptly. We're now on item eight on your agendas, and that is attendance in schools, elective home education and children missing education annual report 2023. And this item can be found on pages fifty-three to seventy-six of your agenda pack. And it sets out the annual report for 2023/24 on school attendance and children who are electively home-educated and children who are missing education. And once again, to recap on the actions required of us as a committee, we're invited to review and endorse the attendance in schools, elective home education and children missing education annual report for 2023/24. And without delay, I'd like to invite Joanne Carr, inclusion and attendance manager, to present the report. We also have Matthew Clayton, head of education support in attendance, to help answer any questions. So it's over to you, Jo.
Thank you. It's lovely to be here this morning to update you on the annual report for 2023/24. And as you will see from the report, it was jointly written by myself and George Handaner. The attendance team since September 2022 have been working to the national guidance, working together to improve school attendance, which gave a clear message that attendance is everyone's business. The attendance team have developed a robust attendance strategy which sets out Lincolnshire's attendance priorities. The strategy defines the role of our targeted support meetings within schools and our wider education settings and clearly sets out the categories of attendance we monitor. Those categories of attendance range from ninety-five percent to a hundred percent expected attendance to those children with severe absence, which equates to less than or equal to fifty percent attendance. In Lincolnshire, all schools have signed up to share the attendance data via the Department of Education's attendance data dashboard, and all schools, academies and settings in Lincolnshire are receiving targeted support meetings. The meetings have been developed as part of the model to encourage strong relationships between schools and practitioners, and we are receiving excellent feedback on the benefits and effectiveness of these, especially from a number of our large multi-academy trusts. This model ensures that every setting has a nominated attendance champion and a designated local authority officer to discuss their attendance. Through collaborative working with our colleagues across children's services, all targeted support meetings are booked and well-attended. The attendance team have also provided strategic and practical attendance support to our education settings through a range of support mechanisms, including online quarterly attendance briefings, attendance newsletters, bulletins, social media campaigns, and encouraging our leading schools to share their best practice through cluster meetings and peer support work. Our attendance champions receive dedicated time in their one-to-one meetings to discuss complex, in-depth cases and are encouraged to use a wide range of tools when removing barriers to improve attendance. This includes the importance of robust day-to-day processes, such as proactively managing lateness, improved communication with parents and identifying unexplained absences. As you will see from the report, we are tracking local attendance data across all settings. Appendix B, submitted with our annual report, covers the period autumn 2023 to spring 2024 and shows a positive trend with a decrease in absence across Lincolnshire compared with the previous year. This trend is across both primary and secondary settings. We also have, sorry, we have also reported there is a slight increase in absence for children within our special schools compared to mainstream settings. Children on the role of a special school fall within our priority groups as identified by the Department of Education, along with those children open to social care and also children with disabilities. These children often face more complex barriers to attending education. Some may have long-term conditions which may result in more frequent absences for legitimate or unavoidable reasons. Children that have a medical reason that prevents them of attending school full-time can access their education through a reduced timetable. their education through a reduced timetable. Children who are on a reduced timetable as a temporary adjustment still accrue absences. Therefore, this can account for those children on a reduced timetable who can find themselves in a severe or at risk of severe category. We continue to work closely with our centre team managers, who currently deliver our targeted support meetings in special schools, to ensure we understand the individual needs of these pupils and their attendance is tracked and reviewed regularly. The priority groups remain a focus for the team for the current academic year, and we are working with colleagues across children's services to develop a comprehensive data dashboard to support us in extracting the key data we are required to report on. You will see from the report during the period 23-24 that there were, there was a six percent decrease in children missing from education notifications compared to the previous year. I can report we are seeing a similar improvement this year. This reduction is in part due to shared best practice work cascaded out through the attendance briefings and targeted support meetings, an increased time rate through the work of our CME officers and due diligence of our schools. Continued investment in improved systems for collating data from our schools has also supported with this improvement. For those children who are persistently absent for unauthorized reasons, schools have a number of strategies to improve overall attendance. One option is to consider a fixed penalty notice. However, the total fixed penalty notices issued during the last academic year, which saw an increase of forty-three percent, ninety-four point five percent of these were due to holidays during term time. Penalty notices have not proven to be a successful strategy to sustain long-term improved attendance, and therefore, schools are encouraged to use a wide range of other interventions with the support of other agencies who can work with children and young people to support better outcomes. The local authority has the use of various legal functions to fulfil our statutory function in relation to non-school attendance under section seven of the Education Act. For the period 23-24, the authority has seen a drop in the number of those families prosecuted for persistent absence, with the remainder of the action brought against parents for holidays during term time. The reduction in prosecutions for persistent absence is in line with the new Working Together document to improve school attendance guidance. This has placed a greater emphasis on working across wider services to reduce the barriers to attending school, and there is an increase in supportive methods used to return children to education. One method of returning children to education is through the use of reduced timetables during, and during the 23-24 period, we have seen an increase in the use of these. It is worth noting that every child accessing a reduced timetable must have a plan, and of the total entries, nearly half of those reported are on repeat plans. A reduced timetable must be reviewed every six weeks. For those children who are on these repeat periods, our schools are frequently monitoring the child's progress and ensuring the arrangements are meeting the child's needs. Reduced timetable numbers are also monitored through the targeted support meetings and individual, those complex cases discussed in more detail at these meetings. We are currently working on our IT and performance, sorry, with our IT and performance colleagues across the council to update the system we are using with schools to collect this data on reduced timetables. Our aim is to expand the current system to collect more comprehensive data sets, which we hope to report on later this year. We have continued to see an increase in the number of children withdrawn to home educate. At the end of the 23-24 academic year, there were over two thousand children home educated in Lincolnshire. We continue to liaise closely with colleagues at regional meetings, and it is worth noting that this increase is in line with the national increase. The reasons for withdrawing to home educate remain varied, with school preference, unmet need, school refusal and anxiety still amongst the highest reported reasons. The data we collect also highlights a decline in parents withdrawing children from mainstream settings based on their philosophical reasons. Those families where the education is deemed unsuitable are offered support from our team to support a return to education. If families choose not to educate with this support, in sorry, engage with this support, the local authority can order return to school using a school attendance order. The introduction of the Children's Wellbeing and Schools Bill, December 2024, has proposed a number of significant changes and improvements to the functions carried out by the inclusion and attendance team. The team are future focused, and many of the additional requirements we already have in place, such as the data we are collecting for children missing from education, robust safeguarding procedures for vulnerable children, and working collaboratively with colleagues such as the virtual school. We are now waiting for the guidance from the Department of Education, but we are confident if endorsed, we can meet the requirements of the new bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We now move to questions and comments from members. Dr Van der Zee.
I have a question about home schooled children. I see that there is an increase, but obviously there are no Ofsted inspectors going along those houses of children that are home schooled. So I'm a bit worried about vulnerable children. And we have seen in the in the case of Sarah Sharif that the reasons for homeschooling can also be sinister. I see that there is a remark in this in this section about home schooled children, that all the services are working together to make sure that the children are being monitored, but there's no home visits. So I'm wondering, I guess you may work with schools, and that's also a question, do you work with schools of children who drop out and then go into homeschooling to make sure that there are no other issues? But how do you how do you assess children who have never been in a school and who are home schooled from the very beginning? So how do you monitor the vulnerability of those children? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, obviously, when we receive information from a school, we use that information and we review that to ensure that safeguard is put in place for any child that's home educated. But obviously, when we don't have that information, we can only base our assessments on the information that we have. So whilst we do have a number of services, and if a family asks for support, we would certainly reach out and ensure that that family were offered some form of support and assistance. But we do base, under the current legislation, we do base our information only on what we have. So it is about if we are notified of information, then obviously we would follow that up. Hope that helps.
So you basically make it dependent on the parents, whether they contact you with any issues? Is that right?
Believe Heather, do you wish to interject?
Okay, thanks. So basically, Jo's team's job is to assess the suitability of education, not to assess whether the child is safe. That just to kind of clarify. So they obviously do have an eye to safeguarding, and they, we do get referrals through from schools who say this family have chosen to electively home educate, and I have some safeguarding concerns. At that point, that will go through for an assessment at the front door to see whether or not we need to allocate a social worker or an early help worker, what level those concerns are at, and then when a decision is made, that decision is reviewed by a manager. So we have a kind of safeguard in place there. I think in terms of those children who have always been electively home educated, I think that for many of those families, it absolutely is a philosophical lifestyle choice, but those children are not as visible to other services. And so there is a potentially an increased vulnerability. And I think I've talked before about there's a lot of tension in the system about this, because you have families who feel like there's an assumption that because they're electively home educated, and their children are more vulnerable, and find that to be a challenging concept. So the reality is, under current legislation, we have no right of entry to a home where a child has been electively home educated. What we are, what we are able to do is to ask for evidence of the quality of assessment. Should we get any concerns raised by neighbours, by family members, or by schools, then our other safeguarding system kicks in. The legislation is suggesting a couple of things. So it's suggesting firstly, that if a child was on a child protection plan, we would make the decision about whether or not elective home education would be a safe arrangement in that family at that time. So we are preparing for that and thinking about what would that mean, how would that legislation come in? Just to let the committee know, we do not have any children on child protection plans who are electively home educated at the moment. And in practice, if we had a child on a child protection plan, even without the ability to be taught, if we felt that that escalated the risk of serious harm, we have the rest of our safeguarding powers that we could work on in terms of safety plans, and we could utilise them. But this is an additional safeguard to clarify in legislation that the local authority, if a child is a child protection, can can do that. Currently, that's the legislation as it stands. Where we might have worries about a family, and usually, that's about suitability of education. So where we had problems about suitability of education, then what would happen is that would move from the elective home education team to the CME team, and then visits could take place, and meetings could be had with the family. But we need to be clear, that is not a safeguarding check. The safeguarding system, as it currently stands, is based on evidence of harm and us having a right to access. And so I don't want to give false reassurances here. The reality is, if somebody's electively home educated at home from birth, then services have no right of entry unless there is evidence of harm.
Thank you so much for clarifying that, Heather. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much for clarification. Councillor Armagh, do I believe you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. Can you tell me what steps are being taken to ensure that reduced timetables are used appropriately and have a positive impact on the children's attendance and wellbeing? Thank you.
Thank you. As stated earlier, obviously, that every child who is on a reduced timetable is in receipt of a review of that. So there is a review conducted with the school, and obviously, at that point, they would ensure that the plan is meeting the child's needs. Obviously, those children are visible, they're in a setting, and also, we are looking at the kind of abstracting that detail further, so that we can assess better about the volume of children we've got on reduced timetables, which we currently collate, but then looking at the progress of those children as well. So that is being tracked, but hopefully we'll be able to report on that for the current year. It is really about working with our schools and making sure we're promoting the importance of those regular reviews and how we're tracking that progress. So it is definitely something we're working towards currently. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Cleaver, I believe you have a question or comment?
Thank you, yes. This twenty-three percent increase in elective home education is quite a large figure, isn't it, in one year? Does that not raise any alarm bells? Do we feel we really need to know a bit more about maybe why that's happening?
Thank you. Obviously, we do collate the reasons why parents remove their children from role, and so we do have that information. And obviously, we are working closely with those regional groups. And I think what we would be able to hopefully report on this year, if the wellbeing bill brings any new changes in, then obviously, we can show that we are tracking that information and hopefully in line with our other local authorities, because we are meeting at those regional meetings with them. And obviously, a lot of that information is feeding into the Children's Commissioner report. So we do feel that it is obviously a concern, and we do know the reasons why. But obviously, it's still a parental right to withdraw to home educate currently. So whilst we can talk about the reasons, and we understand, and we can see an increase, actually, then we do understand why those reasons are. I think there is still that parental right that parents can opt to home educate. So it's about being aware of that as well. Thank you.
Heather, you wish to come in?
Okay, just to kind of give you a broad example of why why we see parents, and Jo will correct me if I miss anything off. So we have dissatisfaction with school. And I think that what we've heard about this committee is lots of children struggling with the academic rigor in school, with the large class sizes, with their emotional and mental health. And so we've seen an escalation in need in that area, which then translates to actually the child feeling unable to be in school. So we've got emotional, emotional school avoidance, which can become EHE. We've got dissatisfaction with schools, so the parent doesn't like the school's approach to uniform or homework. We've got the philosophically committed elective home educators for whom it is a lifestyle choice. And then, and I think it's absolutely right, then we have a very small cohort of people who, you know, are removing their children because they're not visible to services. It's a really, really tiny cohort, but obviously, a really important one for us. And so I think in terms of that kind of overview, I think Jo's right. It's really difficult for us to say, is that a concern currently? And I think there is no indication it will not be the case going forward. It is an absolutely lawful, reasonable, allowable option for parents to take. So is it a worry? You know, as a society, I think we, you know, that's, that's something we're reflecting on through the serious case review, but through the reviews that are happening. But bearing in mind, lots of our electively home education educated children go on to have fantastic careers, go into meaningful employment, go on. So it's a really difficult question to answer, because, you know, the rise in numbers shouldn't be a concern, making sure those very few children amongst them whom we would want to safeguard is. And then I think the other area that is a worry for me is that those who are dissatisfied with the school system, because they're not saying, I really want to do this, they're saying, I'm not happy enough with the school system, so I'm doing this instead. And actually, we need to think about how we, how we continue to work with the school system to make it inclusive of children with those kinds of needs. The cohort that are doing this because they really want to do it, they believe it's the right thing to do, that they're not our concern. They tend to, you know, be really well organised, really well planned. I think other parents, they're there from desperation because their children aren't thriving in school, and that is a worry for us.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any further questions or comments? Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chairman. And you touched on one of the reasons, Heather. Do we, do we know if the philosophical, be it that's how the parents wish to educate, or there are things within the national curriculum that parents on, be it religious grounds or other grounds, find vehemently objectionable, and they are not able to remove their child from that element of the national curriculum? Is that seeing an increase? And I think what you said around how we deal with this is, it's a very delicate subject. I fully take the point that Dr Van der Zee made, and that's a tragic case, and it should never have been allowed to happen. But parents must be allowed, as parents, to say how they educate their children. And if they think that is the best way to educate their children, if they ask for the support, we should give them it, and we shouldn't be intrusive where we don't need to be. The other thing I would say, Chairman, is in this country, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know how well we keep stats on how many are, how many children are home educated, where and how, what their attainment is. But I know in America, for one example, particularly children who are forces children, because they move so frequently, the DOD has a massive, massive home schooling programme. And in that instance, it works exceedingly well. And their outcomes as a result actually are better than, unfortunately, some of the outcomes that our forces children have, because the more they have to move, their outcomes go, they are always better than their civilian peers on an equivalency basis. So if a civilian's moved seven times, and a forces child has moved seven times, the forces child's outcome is higher, but it will always be lower than if you stayed in one place and you haven't had to move, and you haven't had social upheaval due to your parents' role in the defence of the country. So I don't know if that's something that the government has looked at, or something we could, within our limits of autonomy, look at assisting, because I know there is a high proportion of forces children and forces families in general in Lincolnshire. So any support that they could be given, especially as movements may begin to increase because of numbers or shortage of numbers and the way the world is, Chairman, I think we ought to. Thank you.
Heather, you wish to respond?
Yeah, so there was a lot in there, Councillor Smith, as always. I'm going to try and remember all of it, and again, Jo will correct me. So the number, in terms of, is there an element of the curriculum a parent doesn't like, and they can't bear for their child to be taught it? It's absolutely tiny. And in a very small number of the curriculum aspects, parents can talk to schools about wanting to do that in a different way. So I don't think that's a significant factor in this. In terms of the forces children, I, you know, I think, I mean, it's, that's a political kind of statement, isn't it? Would Lincolnshire be saying to forces children, you might want to electively home educate? Because actually, the, and I don't know the data that you've quoted there, just to be really transparent. I'm not, I'm not sure that's where we're at. What we do do is work really hard with schools in areas where we've got military bases, to ensure that they've got good induction programmes. And the research that I've read most recently about forces children is about that belonging, about how quickly you can make a forces child feel like about how quickly you can make a forces child feel like they belong in a school. So we do um promote that research with schools. And we also uh work with the, under the covenant, um I forgot, Martin, can you remember what the covenant's called? That's it, yeah. So we work under the Armed Forces Government to ensure that we're doing all of the support we can. Um speaking as a a previous head teacher in one of our um uh military-based areas, um I think that we, the schools work together as well and we look at what the best nature of that support is. And I think um I think we see a lot of success in terms of that mobility. But remembering that very often, even if Lincolnshire had a policy around that, and and I'm not suggesting we should or we shouldn't, um those children are are often not in Lincolnshire, as you've quite rightly said, for very long, because they have multiple moves. So I think that's one for um political consideration.
Thanks very much. Do we have any further questions or comments? No, I I just want to throw one in. Um as we're all well, very well aware in this committee, we had an in-depth um scrutiny review about young carers, and it's been completed and presented, which highlighted we've got about seven thousand young carers in Lincolnshire. And I understand that according to an all-party parliamentary group for young carers and young adult carers, a report produced back in November twenty twenty-three, it they reckon young carers miss about twenty-seven days of education on an per academic year. And this report doesn't make a specific mention uh to that, to young carers. Um and it talks about priority groups. Um would it be possible to consider young carers as a priority group to, you know, in this data? For future reports, that is.
Thank you. Yes, obviously, our schools are our first port of contact and they know their families very well. And obviously, have received um an amount of training to ensure that they can identify those young carers and a support package is put around them. When we conduct our targeted support meetings, we do actually ask around our young carers. And knowing a school's demographics, we might ask a little bit more about that particular group. They're not currently identified by the Department of Education as a priority group, but certainly in Lincolnshire, if we feel that's something we want to review, then we can do, obviously, and take that forward from this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Heather. Did you wish to come in?
If if I, if we could take that away to consider, I need to think about the the technical bit about can we collect that data? Because young carers do come on and off the register. Um and then moving away from national reporting. So it, what I think we definitely could do is add a paragraph to this report on young carers um as a priority group. But whether we can get the data at the same level we have it for other groups, uh would mean reporting differently for every school. So if I can take that away and either it's a paragraph or we can do it, is that okay?
Yep, that sounds sounds good to me. That's an excellent idea. Thank you. Thank you very much. If we have no further questions or comments, I'd like to move to a proposal. And I propose that the committee has reviewed the report and endorses the attendance in schools, elective home education and children missing education report for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And that will see, we will see the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five annual report in January twenty twenty-six. Um can you please raise your hand if you agree with that proposal? That's agreed. Thank thank you very much, indeed. We'll now move on to item nine, which is school admissions update. And the item which can be found on pages seventy-seven to ninety-two of your agenda pack provides an update on the processes by which children are placed into school, what changes have occurred since the introduction of the revised school admissions code in twenty twenty-one, and what challenges are faced by the local authority and wider sector. And the actions required of us are firstly to review and comment on the report attached to appendix A, and secondly, to seek assurance on the current position concerning school admissions following the amended legislation in twenty twenty-one. And this report will be presented by Emily Nichols, Admissions and Education Provision Planning Manager. We also have Matthew Clayton, Head of Education Support in attendance, to help answer any questions. So that relates over to you, Emily.
Thank you. Um so I'm going to go through each area of the report in turn. Um so firstly, um I'm going to discuss coordinated admissions, and this relates to the school's intake rounds. So this is for a secondary school, it'll be year seven, um reception at a primary school and then year three at a junior school. So we continue to have sufficient places to offer parental preference and then reasonable alternatives, if no offer is made, from the schools that are listed on a parent's application form and meet all relevant statutory and non-statutory deadlines. Um the figures for the students offered their first preference sit at around eighty-six to eighty-eight percent for secondary schools and ninety-five percent for primary schools, as discussed in the report. Um a small number of children not offered school within a reasonable distance of home, which was thirteen students for the twenty twenty-four secondary intake, could have been offered reasonable schools um if they had listed them on their application form. Um we can't hold places for students who don't list a school on an application, we must process the applications that come in first. Um so we continue to work with parents to understand the school's admissions policy and the importance of listing more than one preference on their application form. Um the next section of the report relates to mid-year admissions and the fair access protocol. Um I've grouped them together because um they do interlink. Um so this is the area where we've seen most change since the twenty twenty-one school admissions code change. Uh the number of applicants are steadily increasing and have been around ten to eleven and a half thousand for the last couple of years um and have reduced by five hundred in the last academic year for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um the information provided, though, it's one application per child, so sometimes somebody would make more than one application and they are only showing up once in that data. And the challenge um we face as the admissions team isn't related to the volume of these applications, but the way that the admissions code permits schools to refuse um to accept any further pupils when it would prejudice the efficient education and efficient use of resources at the school outside of the intake round. So um it's not an issue of physical capacity in schools or um part-of-place planning, but it is a decision that the schools can make to refuse admission. At key stage four particularly, it's difficult to access places which should be available. Generally, though, we don't have any difficulty accessing primary school places. So use of the fair access protocol is triggered when no school within a reasonable distance um can offer a place or a child become um meets a vulnerability criteria as outlined in the report. Um and their application through the mid-year um system hasn't come out with something appropriate. So for example, a young carer that's been placed really far from home might come under the fair access protocol. Um so due to the practices outlined um within the report, where schools refuse a lower number than the published admission number on intake round, it's increased the number of referrals through the fair access protocol, which is demonstrated in the data. There are also various other programmes that would um account for the increase in pupils coming through that route. Um for example, asylum seekers um and refugees are recognised through fair access. But referral through the fair access protocol due to lack of capacity in schools is rare. And it acts as a trigger for us to have a wider conversation about the need for additional school places in the area. The number of cases at primary school level due to no place has been available within five miles were five in twenty-one, twenty-two, ten in twenty-two, twenty-three, and eighteen in twenty-three, twenty-four. But notably, that's across the whole county, so it's not in just one area. It's open for local authorities to decide how to run their fair access arrangements. So different authorities have different arrangements within the parameters of the same guidance. Um the Lincolnshire Fair Access Protocol is based on a points system and meets twice weekly, which aids in placing children quickly and appropriately within the aims of the protocol. We continue to remind schools of their duties under the protocol as the admissions team, and we rarely receive challenge from primary schools. Where we do receive challenge um from secondary schools, we're able to resolve this within the statutory timeframe of twenty school days. We've not needed to use our powers of direction or seek a direction for an academy from the Secretary of State um for any fair access cases within the past three years, um which demonstrates how strong the fair access is working in Lincolnshire. The new children's um wellbeing bill outlines that there'll be more um powers to direct schools and for schools to take up to their physical capacity, so this might alter the sector again if it does come in. We continue to work with schools to make sure that the fair access protocol is fit for purpose and it's achieving its aims by consulting with schools every two years. A consultation occurred in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-four, uh and will be reviewed again in twenty twenty-six, unless there's a change of legislation, um which brings that date forward. Um so next, I'm going to talk about school admissions appeals. So where a parent or carer is unhappy with the decision to refuse admission at school, they're legally entitled to submit an appeal. There are two key types of appeals, as outlined in the report. In both types, they're originally looking at um the school's admissions policy, whether that's lawful and whether it's been correctly applied. But then it branches off, and for infant class size appeals, they're looking at whether the allocation is reasonable. And for other appeals, they're just balancing the child's case against the school's case for prejudice. So as discussed in the report, we don't have the full details about the numbers of appeals that are lodged across Lincolnshire. So the information that we provided is based on nationally available data. It shows that uh fewer than average primary appeals were lodged in Lincolnshire than other regions, but with higher success rate for parents. The admissions team provide information to parents before they lodge their appeal about which route their appeal will be heard by, whether it be infant class size or otherwise, um and the numbers of pupils within the school, uh which we believe gives parents a stronger understanding of the likelihood of success of their appeal and the route that it would take. And that would be why we think that those figures are slightly different. We have a slightly lower rate um of appeals being lodged. Um but at secondary level, the data in the report demonstrates that Lincolnshire has a slightly higher number of appeals lodged than other local authorities in East Midlands, but with a higher success rate for parents. This is partly due to a number of factors. So these include the rural nature of schools in Lincolnshire, as parents often have a reasonable case to attend a particular school. Also, the selective education on offer in Lincolnshire, which naturally attracts a high number of appeals, either for children who haven't qualified for admission and believe they should have done so, or children who didn't um live close enough to to um obtain a place at the school. In other local authorities where there isn't a selective education, a school that has spaces would not receive any appeals because naturally they would have to admit. But in Lincolnshire, that's not the case because pupils may not have met that qualifying standard. Um and there's no differentiation within the data that we can pull from national data to tell us um where that sits. There's also differing practices between schools regarding um their prejudice cases. Um there are several schools in the county who consistently have thirty or more appeals upheld each year um as they're free to do. Um because they're only required to admit to their published admission number, but they actually have uh more spaces available and choose to do so. Um they don't have the spaces available on paper, um but they do have the capacity within the schools to accept um additional pupils, and they choose to operate in that way, which does um alter the figures slightly. So that provides the update in terms of um admission appeals. And finally, I'm just going to go on and discuss out-of-cohort admissions. Um this is where a child wishes to go to school in a year group earlier or later than their peers. Uh but it's most common where parents of a summer-born child wishes to defer their admission until they're aged five. And they would otherwise have missed the non-statutory reception year. The data reflected in the report covers the requests um for all schools in Lincolnshire. But national guidance was released in twenty twenty-three, which gave further detail on how to consider the requests, which is why the increase in approvals is reflected in those um application figures and outcomes. We consider to con, uh sorry, we continue to consider these cases in line with the statutory guidance and work with schools to inform parents of how children can be supported within their cohort, um should they wish. Um the requests make up less than one point five percent of the cohort size, so they're not currently a concern in terms of our statutory ability to execute our place planning function. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much for for that report, Emily. Um do we have any questions or comments for members? Oh, hands going up everywhere this morning. Um I think councillor Armidge was the first up with her hand.
Hiya. Um how is the council addressing the challenging uh challenges associated with mid-year admissions? So it's not at the beginning of the academic year? And what steps are being taken to streamline this process?
Thank you. Um we continue to have a very robust fair access protocol. Um as I previously discussed, we haven't needed to um direct any schools or seek a direction from the Secretary of State, and we continue to operate within the time scales imposed by the school admissions code. So in terms of how our mid-year admissions are working, because we have such strong relationships with our schools and we'll be able to reinforce the same message about how these should be processed, we find that actually processing those um isn't the difficult part. Fair access can be um a little bit trickier because um we go into a points system, so it can take a little bit longer. Um but schools do continue to understand what their duties are. And I think because we are quite available for um schools to discuss any concerns that they do have, we're able to resolve them quickly. Um our fair access meets twice a week, so it's very regular contact when these cases are coming through. Um and I think we're just continuing to do that and to evaluate with schools what's working well and what could be done better by keeping doing those consultations and just keeping in touch with how everything's going, really.
Councillor Cleaver, I believe you were next.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. I have I have three questions. First of all, in terms of the setting of the pans, is there a duty to cooperate across local authority boundaries? Where a school just outside our border, which may take many pupils from the nearest villages or towns inside Lincolnshire, uh suddenly wants to drop its pan and and decrease its pan, which would, of course, discriminate against the Lincolnshire children because it would, because their their then admissions policy would put them on the on the waiting list as opposed to the people in their own local authority. You hear what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Um is there duty to cooperate? If there isn't, how would we deal with that sort of situation? What can we do about it? That's the first question. Second question relates to the people who getting their first option, first choice, which of course figures look impressive. But that is, of course, based upon the choice you have. If you don't have a lot of choice, you've got to put, you you've probably got very limited choice of schools that you could put first. Um and I'd be intrigued, do we know and can we publish for places in Lincolnshire? What, how many, how many households in different areas have an alternative to their nearest school, which is within, say, fifteen miles? And how many have an alternative school to their nearest one, which is within twenty-five miles? Because to me, that's a really interesting statistic, because you're going to judge this, the statistics on how many people have actually got a real choice as opposed to how many people haven't got a real choice. Um and it's just something that I hear anecdotally a lot about, um particularly in the isolated areas where people say, well, effectively, the admissions thing, either we're going to get into this, into that school, there isn't really a a choice. Or if we don't get into that school, the option is miles away. And of course, we we're very good at making sure that people get in to the nearest school, in that instance, of course we are. But it gives an illusion of choice when there isn't a choice, is really what I'm trying to say. So it'd be interesting to know how many people actually in Lincolnshire actually do have a real choice, because there's more than one school within a certain area of of their postcode. And and the third question is, um presumably, we do know this, um but it'd be interesting to know how many it applies to and what action we take where schools are consistently every year recruiting way under their pan. Do we, I mean, is it a problem? How many of them are there? And when it happens, what do we do about it? Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay, it's just it's in three parts. Um so um so with regards to our duty to coordinate about a school's published admission number, there is no duty necessarily for them to um take our opinions into account. But we are consulted when any school would reduce their power, because in line with the school admissions code, they must um notify all people within the relevant area which covers um any crossing um local authorities. So we would be consulted as part of that process. But also, if they wanted to change their admissions policy that would uh influence us, we would also uh make sure we responded to that consultation. Um and should our opinions not be taken into account and then they do reduce the published admission number, we would have um the option to refer the school to the school educator, should we wish for their policy to be re-examined, um and then we would be part of that process. It's not something we've needed to do, um because we have good relationships with them and we would um identify things early on. But at the same time, those safeguards are there should we have any objections, really. Um with regards to um the data about who, which schools have got, um sorry, which parents have really got more than one preference, it's quite a difficult one because of the rural nature of Lincolnshire. So naturally, we would be not in a position to have a a large number of really small schools so that that option was available. Um because you need to operate the schools um at a level to make them financially viable and um provide a strong education offer. So really, um we do operate our fair access in a way that would looks at distance, but it also looks at if there's not schools within ten miles, if there's not three schools within ten miles, it would look at those three closest schools as well. And predominantly, they are usually ten to twelve miles away. So I don't think there are many pockets of the county where there isn't another school um that is accessible. Um occasionally, in some very sort of rural addresses, there there might be, but accessible. Occasionally, in some very rural addresses, there might be, but those school options still do remain available within a reasonable distance. I think there was another question in there, I'm really sorry, but...
About schools which are consistently, year on year, recruiting under pan?
Sorry, thank you. Schools that do allocate additional pupils after national offer day isn't too much of a concern for us. There is a way that some schools would, oh, sorry, under pan, I've got it the wrong way. Okay, pass that one to you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Emily. Yeah, in terms of that, do you mean mid-year under pan or at the point of intake? Point of intake, so year sevens and year receptions and taking under pan. I mean, it's more the rural schools, and we've seen a trend over the last few years of falling roles, particularly in the primary sector. So, we're seeing more schools not meeting their pan on the point of intake. In terms of whether it's a concern, the schools adapt their curriculum offer and the staffing structures and the class structures they've got in place for the number of children that they've got coming in. So, I wouldn't say it's a concern that there's surplus capacity in the system, and it's providing other opportunities as well. So, for working with early years, possible through that agenda, as well as through the send hubs, through the phase two of the building specialist provision in schools as well. That's given us opportunity to work across different service areas and to look at ways of working with schools to make, take advantage, really, of the fact that some schools are under pan. And then there are the opportunities to reduce the pan as well. So, every year, we look at whether schools are consistently taking below pan, and whether that's, we look at the projections data to look into the future to see, could we maintain a lower pan for a longer period of time? Sometimes that can support a school, because if they've got a pan that means that they've got lots of mixed age classes and they want to maintain, so for example, going from 17 to 15, means that they can continually know they'll have 15, and we know that that's enough to meet the needs of the local community, then we support that as well. So, there's various different ways in terms of how we would use the data that we've got and take different approaches to where they are consistently under offering on pan. I wouldn't say it's a concern as such, unless it was zero every year for a number of years, for example.
Heather, did you wish to come in?
The other thing I just wanted to add, because I think Matt's team do a really complicated piece of work, because looking around the pans, looking around parental preference and what we've seen, I can think of schools that five years ago, Matt and I were really worried about, that are now some of the most popular schools in the area. And so, that swing in parental kind of preference can be really difficult, particularly if we know that the school that's got the low pan at the minute, we are desperately going to need those places in four years because we can see a population surge coming. So, I think Matt's absolutely right. There's a really sophisticated work goes on in planning our place numbers, making sure we don't add too much capacity in an area, making sure we don't agree the pan's reducing too low, and making sure that you don't have schools who are so under pan that they end up getting every child in a city that moves in mid-year because that causes significant disruption for that cohort. So, I think it's a really sophisticated piece of work. And I just, I wanted to emphasise what Matt says is, increasingly, we're being really more ambitious about where we do have space within our settings. How does that help us with our early years provision, our send provision, our alternative provision? How do we maximise the space we've got in schools at the moment? So, I think it's something that as a, as a council, Matt's team are all over, and we're introducing some additional capacity to really get into that strategic place planning in the send area as well. So, you know, it's an area that I think, it's a great question and one that I think we work really proactively to avoid it becoming a concern.
Thanks very much for that. I think councillor Smith, did you have a question?
I did, Chairman, yeah. Two or three or four or five? There's only one, Chairman, but I'd just like to make a very brief point on something councillor Cleaver mentioned around, around school choice. Yes, the admissions policy does allow that, but one thing parents must be mindful of, as I've had this in my division over many, many years, since I've been a county councillor, the transport will only be given to the nearest school in the local transport area, which, of course, parents need to be mindful of, because what has happened in some cases I have is, before the policy was altered, under the old policy, they were given transport. The policy has then changed, but the child is, say, in year 10, and you don't particularly want to move a child in the middle of their GCSEs or their A levels, et cetera. And so, you get a problem. So, it's making sure there's the appropriate lines of communication so we don't seem, so that problem doesn't seem to rear its head for parents and also for us, because then we're frantically going to officers going, can you fix this? And officers go, not really, councillor, no, you're going to have to give somebody some very bad news. My question, Chairman, is a very simple one. If you remove the number of appeals for grammar schools and other selective institutions, what are our statistics compared to our statistical neighbours, Chair?
Thank you. This is something that I would need to look into. It's not something that we have. I don't think it's on the publicly available data. It is sorted by age and type of education. So, it's not something that I can pull alongside this data, because everything here was publicly available. So, it would involve contacting schools. So, it's not something that I can comment on at this time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further questions or comments from members? No, are we all happy? Good. I'll now move to a proposal. I propose that the committee has reviewed the report attached to appendix A, and has been assured on the current position concerning school admissions following the amended legislation in 2021. Can you please raise your hand if you agree?
Agreed.
That is agreed. Thank you very much. Now, move on to the final item on today's agenda, which is the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. And this item sets out the work programme for 2025, and the report can be found on pages 93 to 98 of the Agenda Pack. And the actions required, as usual, of the committee are firstly to review and agree the committee's work programme as set out in the report, and secondly to highlight for discussion any additional scrutiny activity which could be considered for inclusion in the work programme. And I'd like to invite Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, to present the report. So, it's over to you, Tracy.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have one amendment to report to the published work programme, and that's the Minerva House decision, which is listed under items to be programmed, is no longer needed, and therefore has been removed from the forward plan and the work programme. The committee's next meeting is on the 7th of March, which will be the last committee meeting of this council term. We currently have five items listed. These are the Young Carer Scrutiny View, Executive Response and Action Plan, Lincolnshire School Performance for 2023-24, so this covers early years through to key stage five, the quarter three performance reporting against the success framework, an update on the Families First for Children Pathfinder Programme, and, as requested by councillor Reed at a previous meeting, an overview of the key policies and projects by Children's Services of the previous council term for 2021 to 2025. Any comments? Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks very much, Tracy. Do we have any comments, observations, or suggestions from members? No, we're all happy. I'd like to propose, therefore, that the work programme is agreed. Can you please raise your hand if you agree?
Agreed, Chairman.
That's agreed. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance this morning and for your participation in the meeting. And see you in March. Thank you very much.